Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public session of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Halton District School Board for April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Please be advised that the meeting is being recorded and is being livestreamed on the hdsb.ca and on the hdsb YouTube channel. Tonight, we have trustees joining us both in person and online. In person, we have trustee Bryden Brosha, Chair Collard, trustee Danielli Zhang, trustee Shadlerworth and Gray, and online, we have trustee Amos and Baxter. And we have regrets from trustee Ahmed. And Director Ennis, can you tell us which staff are in attendance tonight?
Thank you, Vice President Oliver, and good evening, everyone. We have the appropriate staff here tonight to support the items on the agenda.
Thank you. Tonight, we will ask Robbie to please honor the land.
We begin by acknowledging the land and our responsibility to care for and respect all that provides us with life. This land upon which HCSB is situated is on the ancestral treaty entitled lands of the Anasnovi Ochibwe Michisagui Nation, now known as the Mississaugas of the Credit. Michisagui territory in the past and present continues to host both indigenous and non-indigenous peoples. The HCSB is committed to continuous knowledge building with respect to actions that address and resolve the ongoing impacts of colonialism. We do this by learning and understanding the true history, treaty obligations, duties, and responsibilities, and indigenous rights, while actively maintaining mutually beneficial relationships and collectively respecting and caring for the land.
Thank you. Margot, would you like to move a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Sure.
Thank you. I will put the question on their floor. Are there any objections to approving tonight's agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Onto declarations of possible conflict of interest. In relation to our agenda for this evening, are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And we have for approval the minutes of Committee of the Whole from March eighteen, two thousand and twenty-five. So I'll put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved, the board approved the consent agenda action items as listed on the April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda. Jane, would you like to move the motion to deal with the consent agenda?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Does this item need to be pulled for discussion? I'm not seeing any interest in that, so are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. And we will now proceed to a presentation on student experiences on antisemitism. This relates to a motion that we passed in the fall of two thousand and twenty-four. And the presenter tonight is Dr. Rosanna Bishaglia. Welcome.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. So I'm here to provide a high-level summary of the work to date on the motion M twenty-four dash one-one-nine that was passed by the Board of Trustees on November the fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. The motion, director staff, to gather voices, student voices, on their experiences with antisemitism, and to also gather data on the effectiveness of responses and strategies that HCSB has to address hate, racism, and discrimination at schools. So today, it'll be a high-level summary. The report is coming to you in May at the May Board Meeting. So for this evening, what I would ask is just for us to think about some questions that you might have, that you would like to have addressed in the final report, and I'll take those questions back for consideration. So to fulfill the motion, students in grade nine to twelve were asked to participate in virtual conversations. And the recruitment of students took place through the school messenger system of HCSB. And the invitation went out to all grade nine to twelve students and asked any student who self-identified as Jewish to sign up for the focus groups. In addition to the focus groups that HCSB organized, we also worked with community individuals where existing relationship existed, so that would be our local synagogue, and parents involved in the Jewish Student Association. And so students were also recruited through those means. The focus groups were held virtually to offer students the flexibility to share their experiences and insight in a place of comfort, so most of them were at home. And each session was facilitated by representatives of the Research and Accountability Department and a member of a community organization dedicated to advocacy for Israel and Jewish communities. In addition to the focus groups, we also had a hate, racism, and discrimination survey that, again, was open to all students in grade nine to twelve. And students were able to select the forms of hate, racism, and discrimination that they wanted to discuss in the survey. And those findings specific to antisemitism are also amalgamated in the report coming to you in May. So in total, we had a hundred and thirty students who completed the survey and who selected antisemitism as the form of hate, racism, and discrimination. And then we had thirty-one students who participated in the virtual conversations. From this data, several themes emerged that were consistent across the methodology, whether it's the survey or the conversation. So students talked about experiencing or seeing visible antisemitic symbols in their classrooms and schools. So in particular, they talked about swastikas and other antisemitic symbols in bathrooms, desks, and bus windows. A key concern raised by students was the lack of prompt action to remove or cover these symbols, leading to a persistent sense of unease as they were repeatedly viewing the same imagery. The second theme pertained to the Israeli and Palestinian conflict in schools. So, and this is consistent with what we've heard from other student voice initiatives, that global issues manifest themselves in our school communities. And that's no exception with the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. So an example, students talked about the display of Palestinian flags on their peers' school projects and them feeling uncomfortable seeing these symbols of solidarity with Palestine. Students also talked about the negative impact of online antisemitism. So antisemitic incidents originating online also have an impact on the school atmosphere. They talked about hateful responses to pro-Israel posts on social media platforms and also experiencing mockery of pro-Israel views. Likewise, stereotypical jokes, mocking, or derogatory language was also another area of concern. So students reported encountering jokes about Jewish people. While most students felt that these jokes were not meant to be malicious, they were often made without their peers recognizing their harmful impacts. And after the events of October seventh, students felt that they were mocked for their Jewish or Israeli identity and sometimes being associated with genocide. Students also talked about the need to conceal their Jewish identity, and this was particularly the case after October the seventh. So this might include hiding religious symbols or overall being hesitant to share their ethnicity. And this was driven by negative views and concerns in the public about being Jewish. And also, it was a result of families with the intent of keeping their students safe, advising students to keep their identities hidden, specifically in light of protests. With regard to protests, some Jewish students felt uncomfortable when educators appeared to support pro-Palestinian protests, leaving them feeling confused and with a sense of uncertainty about how to safely express their own perspectives in an environment where protests were seen as allowed. The last theme revolved around school responses and support. So students expressed disappointment in the limited response to antisemitism, particularly the lack of intervention to remove symbols that might have been on desks or washroom stalls for a while. Some students, however, did talk about proactive steps that schools and educators took to provide support. So a concrete example was an email that a school sent out, letting families know that the protests were not endorsed by the school board. That was felt, that was seen as very supportive. And just overall, students talked about small actions from educators, such as even just checking in with students when protests were happening, as very meaningful and impactful strategies that helped them to feel supported. I've been working with the Human Rights and Equity and Inclusive Education to draft some recommendations, and we have some at the moment. But again, these are preliminary and happy to hear your suggestions or questions. One would be to encourage schools to continue to engage with the Human Rights, Equity, and Inclusive Education Department to support learning and response to hate-based incidents. This will ensure appropriate support and resources are provided to students and families. We also thought that it would be important to enhance the use of the discriminatory harmful language protocol for antisemitism. This is a process that's already in place. The protocol helps to ensure a consistent, clear, and supportive approach when addressing all discriminatory language and behavior, and it would ensure that antisemitic incidents are met with the appropriate action and sensitivity. The department will also continue to provide identity-affirming learning opportunities, as they have been doing, specifically culturally responsive and relevant pedagogy. And this approach will need to also include thoughtful attention to both Palestinian and Jewish identities. We recognize that providing a space for educators to confidently affirm both identities is essential to creating an inclusive school environment. Without that balance, it becomes difficult for educators to disrupt harmful behaviors or engage in meaningful conversations around identity and inclusion. The department also has a plan of releasing learning modules on human rights and inclusive classrooms, and this would include ways to affirm Jewish identity in alignment with the Ministry of Education curriculum expectations, ensuring that educators are equipped with the tools to support Jewish students meaningfully. So this report, the antisemitism report, along with the other pending reports on hate, racism, and discrimination, will be instrumental in shaping the actions of the department to address these challenges proactively. And I'll take questions and comments now.
Thank you very much for this summary, and we're looking forward to the full report in May. I see Margot has a question.
Thanks, Joanna. Dr. Bishaglia, thank you very much. Sula pronounced it great. Been practicing. Thanks very much for your report. My question really isn't for you, it's more for the director. So a lot of information has come out, and you've given sort of direction as to what the Human Rights and Equity Department is doing. I'm wondering if we have timelines as to when this is all going to take place. So you spoke to the idea that we already have a lot of these policies in place, we have a lot of this training already in place. However, if these are still occurring, then you have to wonder how people are actually engaging in it. So my question for the director is, how are we looking at moving forward with this in a timeline that shows dedication to fulfilling what Dr. Bishaglia said needs to be done?
Thanks for the question. I am in full support of the work continuing. We have been engaging in the work all this year, previous years, and this really just highlights to us the importance of continuing this work. So in terms of a timeline, the work is continuous. We do a lot of the work, we've done a lot of it this year, and in spite of our best efforts, to your point, we still see issues of antisemitism, like other forms of hate and discrimination. It is not something that is, it can be eradicated by learning alone. I think it's an ever-changing, ever-evolving issue that we need to address, and we, I think what our responsibility is, is to make sure that we're continuously addressing it, because we are never there. We can never really reach a point where we can rest on our We can never really reach a point where we we can rest on our laurels because we see that it occurs um way too often. And um and it's something that I think all of us are committed to doing. So there's no specific timeline, but it is ongoing. And um you know, we we can certainly share things that we have done and things that we are planning to do. Um but we we never stopped working on it.
Can I follow up? Uh yeah, thank you Curtis for that and I I agree. I think that it's um it's not only about the learning because again, as you said, there's been constant, continuous training opportunities. But I just wonder and worry and think about the idea that we have been doing this for a long time and I think we really need to try to think about. And again, as you mentioned, it's not only necessarily the antisemitism hate, it's hate in a broader scale. So what can we as a broader community do in a more focused way? I I'm just, I'm I'm just, I worry when we say things like we're going to continue to do this. Well, if we're going to continue to do something that to this point hasn't seemed to be as effective as maybe it could be, what types of things are we going to try to do to ensure that we are being more effective? And having that focused timeline, I think, might be something that we really want to solidify rather than can, do you see what I mean? Do you know what I mean?
Uh thank you. I I do know what you mean. I I think we all share the frustration uh of not being able to eradicate this uh antisemitism and other forms of hate and discrimination. I I do know that the work that we are doing and in my humble estimation, I think, is mitigating some of that. And so if we hadn't continued to do the work, we would see more prevalence and it would be worse than it is. And so what we do really is to try to mitigate and contain. And while we're working towards eradication, I'm not sure if if in our lifetimes, we're ever going to see it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh for the trustees online, if you have a question, you may raise your hand and we'll go over to Jean.
Thank you very much. I have two questions. Um I wondered if the way in which your work was set up um will permit us to establish a base of data for where we're at now and then is it able to be replicated, the surveys, for example, in a couple of years from now to see if we have moved the dial? Uh and and maybe it wasn't intended to to do so, but that's my first question.
I mean, it it is perceptual data, so we don't, I don't, it's not quantitative. So I won't be able to give you a number that we can say pre-imposed, right? Because it it's um, you know, it's student voices as opposed to number of incidents per se. Um but certainly, I think that by talking with students, we're able to examine the effectiveness of the implementation of policies and practices because the students do see, right? So as an example, the harmful language protocol in in working with uh students, they have seen that protocol working and being in action. Um and so from that angle, I think that yes, we we would be able to assess in in a couple of years' time to see whether those experiences have changed.
And my second question was, uh when we do research like this, do we ever look beyond our own borders within this board to see what other boards of education are doing uh that may be experiencing um similar um issues? Um a- and do we ever sort of consult with them? What are you doing? What's happening? What or what information are you collecting? I'm just wondering if we're, if there's some, if there's a way that we could learn from everyone's experiences as everyone moves through this era that we're in.
Yes, thank you for the question. Absolutely. So I do belong to a group of researchers uh within uh Ontario and so that's information that is shared there. And also uh through the Human Rights um Office, there is that opportunity as well. I've also been following what's happening in TDSB as well quite closely with regard to antisemitism. Um and the Ontario Human Rights Commission is also another wonderful resource. So absolutely, I think that is um an area that provides us more information and also some direction. And I know that the Human Rights and Equity and Inclusive Education team is quite connected with their um counterparts and other school boards, um including the Catholic or local Catholic uh school board. So there is communication and sharing there.
Okay, next, Shanee.
Thank you. Uh so I have a few questions, uh Dr. Bishiglia. And that the first is from the, you just mentioned uh the students' response. They have, they saw several uh the symbols. Uh so I hope we can include those symbols in the future learning material. Because if we know there are some symbols, so everyone, like like me, I don't have a lot of knowledge about this. And if someone sees those symbols, we tell these people, people, the history, the uh, the history of those symbols, why these are hitting, they are hit. So we can put that in the learning material and tell everybody to avoid that and fight against the racism. Because this is symbol, we can see this is not only the antisemitism, this could be anything else. All the symbols, if we know this is something not right and we should point out and and we should include that in our future learning material. That's one thing. And the second, I uh you just mentioned, we don't have a lot of data, so quantify those. So I'd like to know from the feedback, how many incidents are turning into the violence or unsafe uh behavior in the school? So if they, we have those incidents uh from the response, can we have a way to cross-checking with the school uh incident report to make all the response accurate and can be verified? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not following the the verification.
Oh, the verification is if we know from the student uh response, if they they said something, some incident turned into the violence, though we know this is unacceptable. If these incidents happen in school and the school also, school office also has those reports instantly recorded, so we can do the double check and cross-checking the different system to verify those incidents actually happened and how's, what is the the severity of those incidents?
So I mean, seeing a swastika is violence, that is a violent incident, that is a violent experience for for a student. Um students did not share whether there was physical altercations that took place that did not come up in the student um focus groups or in the survey responses. But that's not to say that seeing racist symbols is not psychologically harmful to to an individual. In terms of the incident reports, I know that Superintendent Fowler has worked um closely with IT to be able to determine the hate and motivated uh incidents. So that'll be data that will be come available to us uh for this year. But again, in terms of trying to validate uh student experiences with something that would meet the threshold of a incident report, I don't know that that would be the way to go. Um seeing, seeing a racist symbol is harmful to students and we should take action regardless of whether it hit the threshold of a of an incident report. So I don't know if if that addresses the question, provides an answer.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Robbie.
Thanks. Uh you mentioned specifically keeping an eye on TDSB and what's been going on there. Uh we, at at one of our trustee conferences, they introduced their reporting portal that they've developed. Um I I don't know uh a ton beyond that. Uh I would love to hear what you've learned from the TDSB and what they're doing. Uh and what they have learned about their processes and their effectiveness, both at identifying the scope of a problem and at intervening in that problem. Um so i- if there's there's more from that, uh I'd love to hear it.
I think that's probably a larger question than than here. The portal, I know, has gone through many revisions uh the TDSB and I don't know that I'm the best person to speak to that in terms of what that looks like. Um but I know that there's others who have knowledge about that and that's something that we can maybe take offline.
The the question should have been, is there anything from their learning that we should be applying in our context?
I think certainly gathering um incidents would be something that would be important to track over time. And again, I'm hopeful that through the incident reporting mechanism that Superintendent Fowler has put in place, that that's a first step for us to look at that. I know that there were some issues with the reporting um portal, so there's there's just more to learn. Um nothing stands out to me at the present moment in terms of us lacking um processes. You know, we have the harmful language protocol, we have the incident reporting. So I think that that is a a first next step for us.
Curtis, you'd like to respond?
And no, just wanted to add, Robbie, that perhaps uh when we come back in May, um we will take a closer look at um some of the processes and um learnings that we can apply.
Okay, Amy.
Yeah, um thank you for bringing all of this information to us. I know most of it is qualitative. Um but it's still measurable because if we um do the same exercise every three or four years, we should see a decline in the aggression, a decline in the outward focused um symbols and things like this. Um I find it very troubling that a student found a swastika symbol in our schools. Um that that concerns me mostly for the students who are Jewish, but for all all the students. Because if they see that symbol, they'll start to think it's okay. And that's the part that we need to really be working on is is making sure that kids really understand that the harm done by things like that. And um and to really focus on making it a safe place for everyone by ensuring that things that that engender hatred are not visible in our schools and not heard in our schools. Maybe one day, never to be heard again. I think that's probably more of a prayer and a wish, but um the, it's devastating for me to hear that there's a swastika emblem in at least one of our schools and that a student had to see that.
I don't see any hands up from our trustees online, so I'll go ahead. I I have a question. I just wanted to confirm if there's a a relationship between the um the application of a harmful language protocol and a completion of an incident report. In other words, is there a practice that when a staff member encounters an incident and they apply the harmful language protocol, that they then document somewhere that this was done? And maybe answer a few questions around, you know, what what it was about, how it was handled, how it resolved? And maybe that's to Shanee's point around that kind of tracking and comparing to see what's happening and how how effective the response is?
I think I'll I'll have to take that back um because I I don't know. I know that the harmful language protocol also serves an education piece. Um it's not only a um, you know, a response, it's also a proactive. So there's four steps, five steps, right? So um it is meant to be also an education tool. Um but we'll need to bring that back for certainty.
Okay, thank you very much. Um I don't see any uh more questions or comments. So thank you and we look forward to the full report in May. All right, we'll move on to our discussion items. And the first is the twenty twenty-four Long-Term Accommodation Plan Update. It's an online version, proof of concept. And um presenting tonight is um General Manager Thibault. Thank you, Fred. Welcome.
Evening trustees. Say daddy. Through uh man of vice chair. Um I'm pleased to this evening present our, I guess what I'll call the proof of concept for our online long-term accommodation plan. Um so with this, a couple of years back when we approved the last long-term accommodation plan, we did quite a number of changes to it to make it more visual, more, I think, accessible, um inviting, uh hopefully more interesting too. Um and as a next step to that, what we're really trying to do is still acknowledging it is a very massive document, still difficult to navigate. Uh we believe that moving towards a more online format that is more tailored to someone's end goal of finding out specific information, that's a little bit easier to get to as opposed to trying to load up a very large PDF and then getting to the information that you're looking for. Uh so this evening, what I what I plan to do is just, uh I'll share my screen and I'll provide you with a little bit of a tour of what we have so far. I just wanted to warn you that the information contained within this online database, uh I wouldn't make reliance on the data by any means. This is more just trying to display what everything's going to look like, get a look and feel for it. Once we have that figured out, we're going to have it so that it's easily updatable, so that it's really just inputting information through the backend of the uh the the online form, so it's going to be a lot faster to update. It's just going to be a a a matter of, you know, getting it up to speed. And last one of these before I jump into a little bit of a tour, what I'd like to say is that we do still want to have a physical version of the document. However, this physical version will be very much an abridged version, which will be more or less the first few sections of the uh the current LTAP. And then we'll probably just end it at the list of all the projects. So that way, we have a point in time to say, back in this year, we had these projects listed and so we can have that as a physical document. And then the online version will be more of a living document that we're going to have a lot more school-based information um available. We'll still have it all in tables and things like that. They'll be accessible in the physical version, which is something that doesn't translate well online. Um and then we'll have the counterpart that's more um accessible to the end users, um be it school administrators, our our constituents, trustees, staff, anybody really. The goal is you can get in there and find out what you need to find out rather quickly. And long and short too is uh it's not ready for mobile. I'll say that now, if you load it up on your phone, you're going to ask me, what did you do? Um we haven't done it yet, but once we have the uh desktop version figured out, then that'll be the next step is figuring out how do we deal with it on a tablet, how do we deal with it on a phone, um what stays in, what stays out. So with that, I will share my screen or tab. Let's get to the best part, but here, let's go back home. Alright, so this will be the uh landing page of the uh Long-Term Accommodation Plan. So again, we're trying to break things down into nice little bite-sized pieces into what you're going to be looking for as as an end user. Um so similar to what we have in the current and existing document, we have the introduction section. So the way that this is formulated, each one of these sections, either you can just start from the top and, you know, scroll your way down to the bottom. It's all text-heavy right now, but essentially what we're going to do is start paring this down quite a bit, so that's a lot more digestible. Uh but you can also click on these different um tabs up top just to get to the sections right away, so it's easier to just get to where you need to go. Uh we're trying to add in a lot more of the visuals too to make sure that it's, again, something that's good to read, enjoyable to read if you're looking for information. Um and like I said, you just scroll through and you read what you need to read. Uh find out information about facilities or performance indicators, all of it's accessible here on the on the front end of the document, which is our um our introduction chat, introduction section. Um so this, I encourage you to have a look at it. Again, it's very similar to what we have in the existing LTAP. We might break it down a little bit more along the way once we get a feel for it, but that's the introduction section. That's probably the most text-heavy portion of the document right now, which is kind of setting the the framework of what all of these things mean. I suspect that that's probably going to be the less frequented page overall. This is more just explaining of everything and the sort of the background, the context. I see parents uh visiting more of these other tabs. So going back to our home section here, um we have to add a section, let me just jump into regional. Um, we have to add a section, let me just jump into Regional Halton Overview. This is where we start getting into the more visual side of things. Uh, so with mapping, diagrams, uh charts, graphics, giving a sense of what's expected in the the Halton region. We talk about enrollment projections. And this is what I mean, like trying to get to these more visual graphs and start pairing down to the text. A lot of this, we're gonna be cutting down right now. It's a lot more of a copy paste job. To get uh an idea of what it can look like. So that the pictures say more than what the text does. The text will give you a general overview. Um, so again, we have our tables, we have our information about our facilities, how we're doing, so. These are our KPIs that, as you might recall from the document, we had them all split out to the six different key performance indicators that we're monitoring at a board level. Elementary level and uh by municipality and by schools. So not too much. So this is very much akin to what's in the document right now. Then we move on to our planning initiatives, which is very similar as well. This is again um a portion where if somebody's interested to know what's happening within their community. Uh, they can get kind of a summary page of here's all of the um immediate, medium and long term projects that are in Burlington. That are in Oakville. These can all be clicked on. Oh, yep, and then it'll provide you more information as to what it means exactly. I think we got a couple in here that. Oh, wrong click. But all these are navigable, um and we have again the other municipalities. Right now, we only have the town of Oakville done. Once we have one figured out, uh we'll apply it to the other municipalities. But these are the municipal specific profiles. So now this is where we've gone from the region at a very high level and now we're honing in more on the municipal level. Um, so here you'll have a an idea of what the development framework is within, uh in this case, the town of Oakville. These are all the projects that are happening. Um, we talk about our overall utilization now and what we expect over the next few years. So here you'll have, so this is where we're getting more into the um the visual aspect, the slider bar explaining exactly what the changes are gonna be. In terms of utilization, um at the secondary panel as well, same uh same approach. Enrollment wise, we're gonna be providing bar graphs on, you know, what's the outlook over the next few years, both elementary, secondary, as well as the the tabular version. Then we get into the facilities, you know, how are we looking in terms of FCI? This is always an interesting one. People are trying to understand how well their schools are doing. How well are they being maintained? So again, this is a lot of information that's been uh posted in the physical document. And then again, the key performance indicators, these are really the the ones that we're trying to see how well are we doing as a municipality versus our board targets? Um, have we achieved them? We have more work to do and this is kind of our scorecard on and our kind of strategic direction on where we want to improve overall. Um, so yeah, that's the municipal overview. Review area details, again, very similar to what you have in the physical documents. Um, so again, like our our intent here is that if you're a, I would say, parent. You're probably not gonna go through all of these sections. You're probably gonna be like, I wanna go see what's going on in my community, more most realistically. So in this case, what enables you to do is we'll have another tool up front where it's like, what's my address? What ERA does that um connect to? And then you can jump into the ERA and say, okay, it's uh, you know, I'm in the town of Oakville, I'm in ERA. Uh, two oh one, why is this not? Oh, it's a new tab, that's why. Uh, share this tab instead. So yeah, this'll pop up. And now this is where we're getting into a more community-based level that might be more of interest to uh your constituents or yourselves for that matter. Um, so here, again, it's pretty much a reflection of what's in the physical document here. We give a little bit of an overview of what's in this community, what have we done in the past here. Uh, we're gonna talk about the projects that are coming down the pipe for this area. So here, if you live in this community, are there boundary views? Are there new schools? Like, it'll list them all over here so you can get right to that information as well as a little bit of information as to what it is. Maybe if I go, ERA two of seven's got a lot more action. So here, yeah, so here I can say, you know, what's happening at Oakville four and it'll provide you with the information of what's in that project. So that'll tie into a table that'll say, when do we expect it to happen? When's the construction gonna start? When's the opening date gonna happen? Et cetera, et cetera. So that's the intent for this area here. Then we talk about how much development's happening. Um, we talk about enrollment overall, what do we expect over the next uh ten years? Um, we talk about our junior kindergarten enrollment trends, our enrollment by school. So this is all information you can have and see of like what the future outlook is gonna be within the area, overall utilization now and then. And again, we get into the key performance indicators for that specific geography. How does this um review area compare to? Um, the board as well as the municipality? So that's a little overview there. And last but not least, I think this is the one that's probably the most uh. I think beneficial, especially to parents that just wanna know what's happening at their school. Um, initially, we didn't really have this in the LTAP. This was more part of the the large tables that you might be accustomed to that had all of the schools listed. And then you just have the tabular format of all that information. Here, we're going a lot more visual. So in this case here, if we were to look at, uh, let's say Abbey Lane. You select the school and pretty much all the information on that school is going to pop up. Um, you're gonna have a general geographic location of where that school is located. You'll have the utilization overall, the capacity, how many portables we have on site. Information on the review areas, the programs offered, um as well as some history on the building itself. What we're expecting in terms of school-specific recommendations. So this is like, if you're going to the school and you wanna know what's happening in my, not just my community, but at my school. This might be what ties into what happens, so you're more than aware of what's gonna, wha- what what to expect in the future. And we also have connections to the school feeder list, so you wanna know what school you're eventually gonna go to throughout the system. Um, it it connects to our um. Our um, our online school map uh tool as well, so then you can see what the boundaries are for this facility based on the grade. Um, so really what we're trying to do is facilitate the process of a um. Uh, an end user to find out the most about their school without having to go through different areas um within the website. Uh, we also have the enrollment projection for that school shown in a more visual um format. And last but not least, the key performance indicators for that specific school uh connected to the board target. So this one here, again, it's not so. Um, aggregated, it's more on the school specific side of things, which I think is where um. This online component shines the most is now we're finally able to get into the school specific information, whereas before. Doing something of this magnitude for every single school within a physical document is just not feasible, so. In doing this, I think there's a lot of opportunities there and might allow us to maybe shave some others on the website to maybe make that more streamlined. And this be uh the general focus. So I think that's it for my time, but um I'm happy to take any questions, feedback. Um, in terms of next steps, uh just before I forget. Um, we'll probably be coming on May seventh with a list of our tentative projects for the next uh LTAP. So this'll just be a project listing of what we expect to implement in the next round. I don't expect this to be completed by June. I'll be completely frank with you, the whole online framework. Uh, but what we can do is start moving on the process, saying these are the projects we're anticipating, which is at the core function of the LTAP. And then that's what can go into the next iteration over the summer months as we build this in and finalize the product and again. Um, deploy it to the uh the overall community. And again, it's something that we'll continue to to build on, expand, adjust, adapt. And improve upon as uh the years go by. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Fred. Um, this looks like a really amazing tool. Um, I know uh we were all really thrilled with the changes that you've made um in creating the uh PDF version of the LTAP. We're very pleased with that. We thought that was wonderful, but this is quite amazing and I can see great uh utility and. And the ease of um accessibility and utility will be quite uh tremendous. So over to you, Donna.
I was just about to say that as somebody with an entire bookshelf full of binders of LTAPs from two thousand and six on and paper copies. This is absolutely amazing. Um, I think it's it's wonderful, it's going to be easily accessible. Um, and very, very user-friendly by the look of it. My question is that we do have some parents in our system. That for whatever reason, they can't access wifi, they don't have a home computer, um or things like that. Will they be, would they be able to request a paper copy of an LTAP? Should I don't think they'll need it, but I'm just thinking. In terms of access to everyone, if there's um anything in place for anybody who does not have the ability to access it online.
Oh, it's a, it's a very good question and uh that's where still maintaining some form of a physical document, although very much abridged. Um, we'll have all of this, but more consolidated in a smaller package. So you might not get into the ERA specific um breakdowns. But what we can do is by providing those large tables that have all of this information there, they'll be able to hone in on the school-specific information and find out. So that's something we already have, but to have something to this visual level by school, I don't think would be possible. It's not something that's easily printable either, so. By having those tables as well as a project summary of what's happened in the community, I think it'll be something to give them a starting point. And eventually too, I guess, accessibility to schools, but maybe, you know, things will change where things are uh maybe more accessible or it could be something that's accessed at the school if they need to.
Thank you. That sounds like a very reasonable solution. Thank you. Next question is from Margot.
Thank you. Um, I just think it's great. I think from the mind of a a busy parent, for me to look at that, it is just so easy to access. And as you said, rather than have to dive through all those different avenues and routes, you get right to the the piece about your school or your community. I thought it was interesting because the one thing that really drew my attention up there was one of the visuals was student per hectare. And I kind, I kinda think, what is that telling you? Why do we have, and it, but it is, it's kind of that, it's that, it's that interest, right? Because you look at it, that's really neat that there are. I think it was Abbey Lane had twelve students per hectare. But I thought it was really great. So I think it's a, it's an amazing piece that I think really will. Engage parents beyond what maybe they're usually interested because you look at it and you see something, as I said, that just pops out of interest. So I think it's great and I think it's a a great opportunity for students to get, parents and students to get more involved in school. So thank you.
And Robbie.
Um, I agree. I I think I I heard you make the point that the uh the school information dashboard. Um, is likely the most interesting component for the typical parent and and I think. Um, setting up your user design to focus on that and and have that instead of your last piece on the homepage. Have that as your central piece, uh start here and then if you want something else, go look somewhere else, uh would be helpful within that. Um, the the user design pieces of, I know you're still in development. But when we got that map with all of the projects and all the schools, I wanted to click on the school and say, take me to my, like. I've got my map, click on the school, take me to my school and it didn't click through. Uh, and in some cases, the projects. The projects were clickable, so I would click on the school and I would get the project. I'm like, no, no, don't tell me about the project, particularly if it's a. Uh, uh, a region-wide thing, I'm like, take me to the school first, then ta- take me to the project. And so so there was some. Some clickability stuff there. The other piece that stuck out was you have regional projects and they're represented by a single dot somewhere. Uh, and so this dot could be. Five miles east of my school, but it's actually directly pertinent to my school. Uh, so for and and that, how to how to display that and that, yes, this is still relevant to you on the visual side, interacting with. Uh, hopefully what what's set up and and making sure that 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 school ERA link is really strong. Uh, so that that people know to go from one to the other. My bits, oh, sorry, one more. Um, popped up in the in the introduction and and overview, you've got your navigation at the top. But you can't actually see all the navigable pieces. So your table of contents is effectively half-hidden to the right side and you have to notice scroll across the top to get there. So like just make that, make those sections really, really easily accessible and and quick to hop through. Cause you want people looking at the table of contents before they start reading the uh whatever's going on and and the rest of it. So now this is what I want, this is what I want. Um, sorry, all of those pieces of constructive feedback is to say, good job, keep this going.
And and through through Vice Chair Oliver, no, that's what we're looking for is like as even as I'm going through, I'm like, you know, best part of school information dashboard. Like, how do we switch it around? So I think that's about a little bit of the learning as we find out how people are using it right now. It's been very much contained to planning, so no, the. If you get comments or as you're going through it or you're noticing things or things you'd like to see or change, like by all means. Float us an email, let us know and then we're definitely gonna bring that back. And as we develop this and kind of figure out how it works out, um we're definitely gonna add that. And what's nice about this too is that it's um it's an online dashboard that's pretty user-friendly, I think, in terms of uh what we can do. There's certain things we can't do that hopefully eventually um RJS Online will be able to adapt to. But I think there's some flexibility there where things can move around pretty easily and we can uh look at things. And I do acknowledge your boundary review one, that's one we're trying to figure out in our minds and how to display that in a way, but uh we're we're getting there.
Okay, thank you. Jean.
Yeah, just a quick question. Is this document a a living document in the sense that um it it it's never gonna stick. Uh, for a while or be stagnant, it like, will you always be backfilling information as we go? Like, my question being specifically, if I want to look at the LTAP for a given year. Can I be guaranteed that what I'm looking at is sticking for that year or are you continually with your group massaging the data? Improving it or updating it? Like, when do I know that the data I'm looking at is for this next year out? Or is it ever for the next year out? Is it just today's data?
Uh, to be sure, the 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 idea would be to have a point-in-time count dates. Um, and depending on what the data set is, uh well, there might be some varying dates, some of them might align with their school year, others might align with fiscal years or calendar years. Um, it it depends, but the intent is it changes once a year, if that, or if not, it's gonna be biannually, every two years we'll do it. Um, we're still trying to work through it right now. We kind of set ourselves up where we should do at least a project update every two years. If we can do it more frequently and it doesn't take up too many staff resources, it should be yearly. But to your point, y- you won't expect like one day you're gonna go on and it's gonna be three hundred fifty kids and then the next day it's like, oh, we changed the projection, it's three forty-seven. We're gonna keep that where once the that information released, we're gonna lock it in. Um, the living part might be more for talking about, you know, profiles, developments or things that, you know, there's new information that we can um improve on or. Or at least if there's like a an error or something, we can easily go in, update it and deal with it. Um, but the idea would be once it's set, it's set and then that way, um, you know, for out, for until we release a new one. So you'll always notice in the top left, it'll tell you what the current version is. And so we change that to, let's say, the twenty twenty-six version, it's gonna be the data as a backcount date.
Thank you. Uh, Margot.
Uh, yeah, thanks. And this, I don't think really is a question for you, Fred, but more a question. I'm just wondering, so I'm looking at the numbers and. Again, I love the student per hectare, but I'm wondering where do we? How do we calculate? So I'm looking at average building accessibility, which says ninety-seven percent. How, where's that number come from?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that that is, I again, it's.
I know, I don't think it's for you. I think it'd be for Ian maybe to to speak to. I'm just wondering, what is that base measured on? Um, that to me seems high. I I don't know, but I just think of schools that I've been to.
Is so so to answer your question, the way if I recall, and that, there's a definition in here under introductions, if you go under um facility performance indicators. We define every one of them as to how we're measuring it. So here we say the KPI will men, or why don't I just share my screen? There we go. So if you go under introduction, uh, let me get to that tab here. Um, if you go under performance facility indicators over here, what we've done here is uh we've defined every single one as to how we're measuring that. Eventually, what we wanna do is inside of all of the areas where you do see these, like you can hover over the the icon and it'll give you the description. Still trying to figure that out. Um, but essentially what it is is how much of the floor space within that school is accessible for somebody that's in a in a wheelchair. So as long as there's an elevator or there's a push-by knaxes to get in the school, if there's a ramp to get into it, um that to us, we're defining as accessible. Is it AODA compliant? No, we're not anywhere near that. If we had that, we would be in a very low number. Um, but what we've done in this case here is we started with, um, and this this applies to all of our, well, let's say most of our KPIs. We're setting a target as this is what we're gonna try to achieve so that somebody in an accessory or a device that requires accessibility um infrastructure. At least they can get through the entire facility. Um, is it the best way to get through it? Maybe not, but I think once we hit that target and we've hit our hundred percent. Then the next step is let's define a new KPI, the work's not done, there might be a higher standard of care. And maybe it is AODA and that's the next step is how much of a building is AODA compliant and can we move towards that? So this is how we've kind of set expectations as well as a reasonable goal that we can achieve in the five, ten-year period and say. Well, if we start with this, let's do this. And once we reach that goal, then let's reassess it. So a good example too is outdoor learning. Our goal is for every school to have one. We're almost there. We've got. We're almost there. We've got a handful of schools that need one. And when we hit that target, well, then we're going to have to rethink, well, what's a new KPI we want to implement? And look at that as a strategic direction, facility services and planning and, and the board, maybe it's something else, maybe it's two per uh, per, per school. Or we, 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 we hit a new metric. So that's the idea behind this is to track our progresses, define goals. Once we've achieved that goal, what's next? The work's not done, we're always improving. So then we define something else that is also achievable within a, you know, a five year period is what we're trying to do. Um, and that's applicable to all of them. It's like, let's try to get a standard.
Right, yeah, thank you. And just a quick follow up, I just think that. Ninety seven percent to me sounds like amazing, but I, I think of accessibility, I think of schools I've been to. And I think of accessibility beyond physical accessibility, there's physical, social, educa-, all different types, but I think about. Saying that our buildings are ninety percent accessible, I think is painting. A picture that might not be accurate. I just, I, I just think, I think of the schools in southeast Burlington where I live, which are older buildings. And by and large, they are not. AODA compliant for sure. So I, I just, I, I wonder if we want to be, and I'm not saying, I think it's so great to have targets and so great to have ideas. And I think what, and I know Ian is doing amazing work in creating accessible. Opportunities for all students across the spectrum, but I'm, I, I worry when I see that ninety seven percent because I think that. For me, that looks like we are. Beyond where the schools are. And I, I just think that might not necessarily be accurate. And I think that people would have. Difficulty accepting, I, I have difficulty accepting that number. So just a, a point of. I don't know if it's clarification or what, but I just think it's.
And I, I think there's just a rap, and I think that's why it's going to be important where, when you're on that, because no one's going to really get to this page. What we want to do is make sure that when you're looking at these KPIs and you're hovering over it, it gives you an explanation of, and, and maybe we have to be more explicit. This is an AODA compliance, it's a very different beast. This is our standard right now that we've defined. Uh, so no, ta-, uh, point well taken, and that's something that we want to apply for all of them. So it's very clear that you don't have to find this information. To get to the conclusion, but you'll notice, I think that Burlington schools are much lower. So it's uh, once we get that out, you'll be able to have a look and. Let me know.
Okay, um, I'm not seeing any other uh, speakers on the list, so I, I do have a question for you. I actually, question or comment? Comment is, um, I echo Robbie's sentiments. Um, I really like the uh, school information dashboard. I think it's an excellent summary of all the key information. And I think it'll be very useful to a variety of stakeholders. Including the students who will learn a great deal about their own school and will be able to explore some of these um, indicators. I see that um, you have a section there, recommended actions for this school. And I'm pleased to see that because I did ask if that would be something that could be added into the LTAP. And what I was also thinking about was, if there is um, a list of recommendations around capital projects or facility improvements. You know, let's say um, an elevator has to be added or something like that. Would that be included in this section of the dashboard? So that somebody looking at their school would know that there is something in the plan. You know, whether it's a, you know, an expansion will be added or um. You know, childcare facility will be added in or elevator is going to be brought on board, that sort of thing. Is that um. Where they would find this information?
I, I would say additions, capital priorities, funding requests, things like that, absolutely. Uh, when we get into the more granular with uh, facility improvements such as elevators or anything that has to do with renewal or anything like that, I, I'd say no, we're not there yet. Maybe it's something way down the road, but that level of information so granular, I think it might get a little bit um. Difficult to manage and it might also s- set some expectations that are a little bit too high for now. Um, it's not to say we can't do in the future, but that's really out of my realm of, I, I guess, responsibility too. I think that'd be something more for uh, Ian to. To discuss with us to make sure it's like, maybe it's a little bit too much for now, especially on the reporting side of things. But uh, I think Ian's reports on multi-year capital plans and for the uh, is, is a good avenue for now. And then maybe eventually it's um, it's something else we can look at. But again, the KPIs are meant to kind of encapsulate some of that to say like, this is. The work that we're doing on the FCI front, as well as the environmental sustainability, accessibility and air conditioning kind of tie into that. So it's a more general view of. It hasn't hit the target yet, but we want to. So hopefully we can see those things expand over time as they improve. So um, yeah. It's a, it's a yes and no to your answer.
Yeah, I get that. And, and that's what I was thinking was Ian's capital um, projects uh, reports that maybe some of that information could be, could be included in this dashboard. Um, and just to Margot's point, um, so you said there will be definitions. And I'm guessing there might be also kind of a formulas presented. So for instance, how is accessibility calculated? Right? What are the elements that come into play when we're looking at assessing the accessibility index per se?
It's generally the, the definition, yes. So for the accessibility one in particular, it's not really a calculation, but it's more. Um, it says of, of all the GFA, how much of it is accessible and over the total GFA of the school? So that's. The rudimentary way that we're, we're applying that one specifically. But yeah, generally if there's a more complex one, we will uh, illustrate it in the, the document.
Okay, thank you very much. This is, this is wonderful. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We are now up to item five point, five point two, and we have the code of ethics policy. And I'm inviting Superintendent Ippolito. Alison, thank you.
All right. Good evening. Yes, um, so through you Vice Chair Oliver, the uh, first um, policy for tonight is code of ethics. This is the companion policy for the code of ethics administrative procedure. Very few minor changes really, and the majority of that additional language that you do see. Um, is really to align with the new policy template sections. As far as any changes to the actual policy, there, there really aren't any. So um, I'm happy to take any questions or comments though.
Are there any questions for Alison on the code of ethics policy? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item five point three, and that's the harassment policy.
Yes, thank you. Um, so this is the companion policy for the respectful workplaces, free of harassment administrative procedure. So again, there is some language added in there to fit with the new templated sections. And changes have been made for consistency to the updated administrative procedure. So revisions were really essential to ensure alignment with current legislation. Um, specifically the Occupational Health and Safety Act. The previous language. Uh, actually inadvertently broadened our obligations beyond what we could really effectively manage and control as an organization. Um, which put us in a little bit of a vulnerable position. So in consultation with legal, we have refined the policy to align with the administrative procedure to ensure it aligns with our obligations. Specifically, you'll note, um, and I do just want to draw your attention to this, um. The title has been updated to reference harassment only. Um, and so from a legal compliance perspective uh, for employees, this does directly address harassment. Um, and discrimination can actually fall under harassment as a, a definition. It's important to note however, that discrimination such as the systemic discrimination is different. Does not fall under harassment and it doesn't fall under the purview of these specific procedures. Um, which are mandated by the Occupational Health and Safety Act. So this policy and the accompanying procedure. Um, are really focused on individual employees, our obligations to individual employees and our obligations under the Human Rights Code and Occupational Health and Safety Act. In the context of employment. Um, so with that, happy for any questions or comments on that policy.
Okay, we have a question from Margot.
Thanks. So um, I'm just wondering, and I don't know if this is for you again or for Curtis. So with that, with the elimination of discrimination from the title, and even our discussion earlier about hateful. The policy that.
Harmful language.
Harmful language protocol. Thank you, Joanna. Um. Does discrimination fall somewhere else? Like, have we covered that somewhere else?
Yes, I, I can uh, try and answer for you uh, to begin with. And absolutely, discrimination. So again, this is for employees only, right? So you do have the student aspect and all other aspects. So you still have the Ontario Human Rights Code, which prohibits discrimination, absolutely. Um, from students and systemic discrimination. And you also have the HDSB Code of Conduct, which would be applicable in, in that case as well.
Okay, question from Tanya.
Through the chair, Vice Chair, um, so I'm looking for a bit of clarification. The scope says it applies to HDSB employees and sets expectations for the behavior of non-employees. The non-employees, are those the students and the trustees?
Non-employees could be uh, any of the above, because we have an obligation to our employees to protect them from harassment. Or discrimination as harassment from any party. So a non-employee could be, yes, anybody, community members, yourselves. Uh, parents, students, yes.
Okay, so for, for my clarification, so this basically applies to anyone under our roofs, anywhere.
Y- y- yes, essentially that's what that section is trying to capture, that while this policy. Is intended to meet our obligations to employees for protection. It does apply in a sense that we, we have, we've set expectations for behavior towards employees. It's, it's a, a little bit of a secondary piece, um, and that's why it's tried to capture under that scope.
I just need another minute to, to work this through. If there's another speaker, go ahead.
Okay, we'll go over to Jean.
Thank you very much. I'm looking at um, in my documents, page seventeen, but it's the, the end of number two, policy statement. I couldn't help but notice that um, it reads workplace harassment, which includes sexual harassment. Sexual harassment is old and. It's, what's that telling me when you bold a word like that? Is it that that's the most common form of workplace harassment? Or is it a, a one out or, or why, why is it bolded? Because it's mentioned there. And then mentioned in the very next sentence again, including sexual harassment. So. Has sexual harassment never really been considered as harassment? Like, why the um. Why the bolding and, and, and the double speak, uh, uh, not double speak, but double, double the mention? Thank you of that.
So I'll have to look back at the previous iteration. It could just be a formatting issue. Um, because if you go to section five and definitions, it is bolded because it is a, a defined term. Um, and so it might just be through revisions and iterations. There's no reason that that needs to be bolted in that section. I, we, we can uh, amend that.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. So we'll move on to the next item. Thank you very much, Alison. And the next item, five point four, electronic meetings policy, and that's the policy by law governance standing committee. Robbie.
Thank you. Um, this is a draft comprehensive review of the electronic meetings policy. Um, Ontario Regulation four six three ninety seven has been updated since the last time. Uh, we looked at this policy. And so there are a number of new uh, requirements placed on trustees and the. Presently, that is that the board shall have a policy that says these things. And as of September, that will be simply the regulation says this. There is nothing about the board's policy anymore. Um, I'll walk you through what I think are some of the, the important changes here. Um, and try and detail as much as possible what's, what's required and what's uh, discretionary to us. Um. So, uh, first off, there is the requirement that all trustees be physically present at all regular. Board meetings and all regular committee of the whole meetings. Unless one of the four conditions outlined in section three uh, is the case. There's, there's one other condition, which is that the trustee lives more than a hundred and fifty kilometers away from the, the meeting place. And that doesn't apply to us because we don't have a hundred and fifty kilometers of, of space within the region. It does not limit virtual participation in special meetings. And so we have opted in this draft. Uh, to allow electronic participation in special meetings. Um, and the, the rationale behind that is twofold. Um, one, um, in an urgent special meeting case, um. If you're calling in a meeting on forty eight hours notice, uh, you want people to be able to attend whether they can physically make it there or not. Um, and in uh, even in an important one, for example, the, the special meeting we have coming up. Uh, it won't necessarily have been put into everyone's calendar. Uh, if people have competing priorities and they can attend virtually but not attend in person, we want to encourage that, that participation. The. Second major thing to draw your attention to is a change in the regulation that the Director of Education or Designate. Must now be physically present, uh. Uh, sorry, the Director of Education or Designate shall be physically present at, at every meeting of the board or committee of the whole, regardless of whether it's special meeting or not. Um, and then uh, the Director of Education or the Designate shall be physically present in the meeting room for each meeting of a committee of the board. That is now in the regulation. Um, and so that will be a change in practice for our board. Um, and, and designate, we note designate. So many of our board committees, our statutory committees particularly, already have staff. Uh, participating who can easily be the director's designate. Uh, but some of the standing committees do not. Uh, and we will have to consider the procedures for, for how that happens, who, who the staff point person for the director is going to be. And, and ensuring that scheduling can happen appropriately. Um. Uh, for committee meetings, the chair of the committee must be physically present. Uh, the other members are, are not required to be. Uh, or, or the chair's designate, yes. Um. There is no regulation around student trustees. In this draft, uh. I have proposed that student trustees may participate electronically. Uh, that is, uh, that is a question that could be addressed differently if, if the board will that so. And most of the rest of this is consistence. Um, there's, there's some language about in an emergency situation where the board is closed. Um, COVID style, uh, then we may meet online, uh, yeah, under those circumstances. Um. Uh, that's, that's the, the overarching set of changes that are uh, available here. If there are any questions, either about clarification of what the regulations are, to the best of my ability. Or um, or suggestions for, for how we might tackle what is within our scope of uh, of control, uh, I'd be happy to, to take those.
All right. Thank you very much, Robbie, for this comprehensive summary of changes and revisions. Amy.
Yes, thanks. Um, while I am still hopeful that the province will decide that they need to give a little bit more latitude in the. Four or five reasons that, that trustees have for not being physically present, or perhaps give them a. One free pass, a year to not be physically present without meeting the regulation, because sometimes things happen. Let's just face facts. Um, being in bad traffic can be a legitimate reason for not being physically present. Um, but I do think that the changes here are, are very fairly and accurately represented. are very fairly and accurately represented regarding the legislation. So I am in support of the changes made to this document. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to you, Margot.
Sorry, thank you. And again, this question isn't for you, Robbie. I think the Director, you've got lots of fun stuff going on now for you. Because I think of all the committee meetings we have, like, we have lots of little committees that are just trustee-led and oriented and for now, or designate, delegate to be there. I really don't, I don't understand why, because I think it's, for them, in my humble opinion, time waster for you, but that's just my opinion. My question is for Amy. When we look at the idea of those five reasons, and let's say, I think it's really difficult, because I think, again, as we've spoken about before, we want to encourage people to become trustees and with busy lives and with busy schedules, it's hard to do that and have to maintain a perfect attendance. I know I haven't been able to do that recently because of pressures that I have from my work. So with that, if there are trustees who aren't able to attend, will they have to step down? Will that be the process? And what will happen?
So there has been no change to the three misses in a row and you're out rule. And so until that rule changes, as long as you don't miss three in a row, and as Gillian Katarna told us, committee of the whole meetings now also count. So if you miss board, committee of the whole board, or committee of the whole, board, committee of the whole, in a row, then you do lose your seat.
So then, my question is, what is the force? So they say you have to be physically present. But if you're not, and you don't come, I didn't come tonight, but I come next week, and I don't come the next week. So I am breaking the rules. But what happens to me? Because it's not three in a row.
Legislatively, nothing happens to you. If someone is missing frequently, though, I do let them know that they need to make sure that they're attending more frequently and that we do prefer in-person attendance. But I have no power one way or the other, and I frankly don't want to have any power.
No, 100%. So I'm just kind of wondering if these rules are being put in place? And is it a suggestion? Or is it a rule? Because when I look at it, to me, it sounds like a suggestion, because nothing can be enacted unless you're not here for three meetings in a row. So really, it's a suggestion. I don't know, I'm just wondering.
I think too, though, we have to think of public perception. If the public notices that their trustee is not participating in meetings, that would not behoove them to be voting for that person in the future. So I think it is about representation and being visibly representing your community and the board at the table. I know that I've shared with all trustees that we've been asked to track this. OPSBA, our provincial body, has asked Chairs to track attendance, whether it's in person, virtual, and the reason for it and everything, so that we can show that we're being consistent in applying the rule. But it's not like, the Chair of the Board can't go to your house and say, "Are you really sick?" I mean, it becomes a point in futility. And I would agree with you. It seems like it has no teeth. And yet, we are beholden to it.
And I think it puts undue pressure on yourself as Chair, because you aren't the police and it's not your job to be the police. And I think it's really, to me, it's unfair. And I think it's, again, with the no teeth that it has, I just, I struggle, because I think, I look at it, and right now, I have been, in the last month and a half, I've been lucky to have that flexibility to be able to be joining online when I'm unable to be here due to work circumstances. And then to have that, I don't know. I just, I struggle, because you kind of, I kind of think of what's the point? You're wanting people to be involved and interested and excited about political aspirations or whatever. But if you can't, and the pay you get to be a trustee can't take over your job, so you're going to have to have another job. So for those people who do that and need that flexibility, taking it away, to me, is almost like an in-your-face kind of thing. So I just think it's unfair for you as Chair to have to, as you said, tally and recognize. And we all know, but just my ramblings, sorry.
No worries. Okay, thanks, Margot, and over to you, Tania.
So through the chair. So not a comment on the policy itself and the way it's drafted tonight, but based on the new legislated requirement where the Director or their Designate has to attend each meeting, I think that we, as a board, have to look at how we do business. Do we need as many committees as we do? Can we perhaps consolidate some of those committees? Can we perhaps do some of the work of the committee during committee of the whole so that we can alleviate the need for the Director or their Designate to be at those meetings? So not a discussion for tonight, because it's not on the agenda. But if we can pin that to a future committee of the whole agenda topic, so that we can relook at the way we do business, or else Curtis is Curtis is going to be spending much more time. So, yeah, and yeah, detracting from what you were hired to do. So we need to rethink the way we do our work.
Yeah, that's a good point, and Amy would like to respond.
For the last couple of months, when I've been looking at the standing committees, I've been seeing a lot of overlap between the BSA Committee and the PD Committee. And I've mentioned, I think, at least one committee of the whole that we may want to combine those two together. So yes, I see where you're going with the, let's reduce the number of committees. And a lot of the work of the committees does come to the board, because we have those reports coming forward from the standing committees here, as with this policy tonight. We do have staff at the Financial Advocacy Committee. We do have staff at the Governance, Policy by Law and Governance Committee. So we are two-thirds of the way there if we reduce to three standing committees. And most of the other committees are staff-run, so there is staff there. So I don't think it's putting as much pressure on Curtis as perhaps it looks like it is. And I'm amenable to any kind of creative solutions we can come to in order to make sure the work gets done in an efficient way.
Thank you, sounds like a good plan. All right, we are up to our final discussion item for tonight. That's Agenda Item 5.5, Trustee Appointment Process. And I'll hand it over to Amy to start the discussion.
So, yeah, we got the final people coming in at around 8 o'clock this morning. The deadline was nine. And we have 29 applicants. So apparently, the turnaround time was sufficient for the public. I've never seen 29 applicants for one of these before. But that means we will require two nights for the interviews. So I'm glad that we had two nights booked. And we made some changes to the procedure document to try and give a little bit more information to everyone about how we would like to proceed with the discernment and deliberation once we go into private session, because that had been really very brief. And we wanted to make sure that it was clear to everyone how we'd like to go forward on that. And so if anyone has any questions, have at it.
Okay, Margot.
So, coming from the discussion that we just had, are all applicants aware of the time? So 29 is a lot of people to interview next week. I'm just wondering that they are all cognizant of the fact that they cannot miss meetings and that meetings run on Tuesday evenings? It's pointless to interview somebody if they feel, "I can't come on Tuesday nights," right? So I'm just wondering, what information have we given them in terms of that piece? Because it's a great opportunity to maybe whittle down the list, if it is whittable.
Through the chair. So that is a great question. At some point last week, it was raised that we have a role of trustee document on the trustee page of our website that needed a little bit of updating, sort of to reflect things like we now meet on Tuesdays as opposed to Wednesdays before. So I have gone through and made some of those changes. Tomorrow is the deadline to invite candidates for an interview. And attached to that email, I will be adding that link, which will provide them an overview of the role when we meet, some of those general information points for them to get greater clarity on what the role entails.
Can I follow up on that? Thanks, Carolina. Can we have a confirmation that they've read it? So I know, so for example, for myself, at the university, we have the Student Handbook. And one of the things that we do to try to eliminate people coming to the office to ask questions is we try to make sure that they've read the handbook. So we have a, I have read the handbook certification. And I'm just wondering, because I'm just trying to think that if there are people that are coming out here to apply to be a trustee and maybe thought we still met on Wednesdays or didn't recognize that there is now this new rule in place that says you cannot miss meetings, I just think it's really important that they, for everybody here, that they have that information so that they're not wasting their time to come out to apply for a position that they can't fulfill.
Tania.
Through the vice chair. Are the interviews being recorded and shared live? Okay, so that's what I thought. So I do have a concern, because interviews are being held over a two-day period. So people on day two have an advantage whereby they could watch all the interviews of the people that are interviewed on day one. And it's an unfair advantage. So is there any way we can record the video? We can record the interviews, but only release the videos to the public once all interviews have been completed?
So through the chair. Interviews are to occur as part of a public meeting process. And so, yes, it kind of seems disjointed in that sense, but the candidates are applying to be, to take public office. And so similarly to when you're running a campaign, you would be very forthcoming and transparent about where you stand on different issues. All of your fellow other candidates would be doing the same. And so it's not very different. Like, that's not a private process in terms of how people run for election. And so this also, in a sense, is not a private process. They are going to be representing the public. And so it does take place within a public meeting framework. And yes, that instance of them being able to review the previous nights, like, that is something that can happen. But it's not like an employment interview. They're applying to be a public official and hold public office.
And I can add to that, that someone could watch the interviews that happened before them in the same night and have that same advantage. So it's not a question of whether it's on two nights or one night. It's a question of, will people be listening to other people's responses? And to that, I have to say, none of these questions are gotchas. None of these questions that we're going to be asking should not be questions that they won't anticipate. They should be anticipating these types of questions at their interview. And I would hope that they have the integrity to use their own thoughts and words and not piggyback on someone else's thoughts and words. And I think we have to give them the presumption of having that integrity, since they are interested in a role of public service. I would hope they have that much integrity. The other thing is, if this was an election process rather than being an application process, these same 29 people could put their name forward and get votes. And, you know, they could look at each other's brochures. And I know people who've done that, looked at other people's brochures and copied it into their own. So, you know, people are going to do what they're going to do.
Okay, we'll move on to Robbie.
Thanks. I'm less concerned with individuals copying from somebody else's answer. If they choose to do that, that's up to us to assess. I am more concerned with the procedural fairness question of access to the questions. It is a very different thing to, as are written in our procedure right now. The first question arrives half an hour before the applicant's interview, and the balance of questions are during the interview. So for that first person, they get half an hour's lead time on the first question, and they get zero lead time on the balance of questions. Anyone who's going at the end of the first night or on day two, or day two, we'll take day two, tunes in, listens to that, jots down the questions, and they have 24 hours to prepare a tight 10-minute response to those four questions. To me, that is procedurally unfair. And I think the remedy to that is that we release the questions to all candidates 24 hours ahead of their interview. And I don't know if we have the ability to do that, given that we have a procedure that states something specific in the alternative.
Let me just review that section of the policy or the procedure, because I don't think it precludes us from doing it, but it might. Yes, you can move on.
While Amy's looking at that, we'll go on to, Carol has a question for us.
Thank you, through the vice chair to the chair. I just have a question about the trustee candidate disclosure form and the reasoning behind that. That's one element of our instruction sheet, our procedure sheet, that does not appear in the governance procedure. So I wonder if you could just speak a little bit to the idea behind that and what we are to do with that information, once it's gathered. Thank you.
The purpose for that sheet is disclosure for transparency. I personally know one of the candidates, and one of the candidates contacted me. And so I'm disclosing that to all trustees so that all of you are aware that I know one person very well and that the other person reached out to me. It's an information, a piece of information for the sake of transparency. And so that, you know, we are all being open and honest and transparent with one another.
Okay, thanks, Amy, and Margot.
Hi, so I know, Amy, you're checking on something, but I don't understand how we could not do it, because really, we are releasing the questions for people for day two, 24 hours ahead of time, by the very nature of videoing the thing. So they, again, I agree with Robbie. I think it's unfair, because... everybody the next day is ready to go. And think about interviews that you've had. If you knew that the person coming after you knew the questions that you didn't know, would you feel that that was right? I think we are opening ourselves up to concerns there, too. So.
Well, I'm more than happy to release all of the questions at the same time to all of the candidates. I have no issue with that whatsoever. I just want to make sure that it's not precluded in the GP. But I think there's also, the point is moot because as soon as you see the questions in any of the other interviews, you've got them. So I'm happy to do that. For some reason, I can't get on the HCSB site right now. So I must have a glitch going on with my laptop. But I'm happy to release them to all candidates at the same time. And that's not an issue for me. All right, and Jean.
I guess I'd take it one step further. Not only would I release the questions, but I would ask for all the candidates to submit their answers and that they could review their answers during the interview process. The reason for that is, I personally sat and interviewed for a trustee job in this board.
Oh, you did?
And as I sat there and was early on in the process, I thought everybody that came after me had even better answers. And however, it's just human nature. Why, when you're sitting in a gallery, listening and, you know, putting it to mind, hmm, that's a pretty good idea, maybe I could include that. In the context of procedural fairness, why wouldn't we ask people to submit your answer to these five questions? Come and present your views. And they may embellish a little bit, but at least at the beginning, we would have unique to each of the twenty-nine people applying to be interviewed, we would have their own words in a unique manner. I just think that that would be one way that we could, you know, get an authentic answer or the authentic person. I don't relish the idea of sitting through twenty-nine interviews and listening to the same content twenty-nine times. Because I'm not sure how I would be able to pick the strongest candidate if the candidates all sound alike because they've fashioned their answers after one another. So somehow, the procedure that we come up with needs to address that so that we are getting an authentic and very fair process for everybody involved.
Okay, Robbie.
I like that recommendation. I think it would be very difficult to implement for this round of applications, given the GP that we have in place and the instructions that we've issued to candidates so far. But I absolutely think that we should take that away and implement it in our GP on a go-forward basis. So I will take that back to the governance committee.
Thank you for sharing those concerns and questions and kind of jointly trying to problem solve. Hearing what lies at the heart of these concerns, I'm wondering, Carolina. So I understand that this needs to be conducted during a public meeting. Does it need to be livestreamed? Or can it simply be open as a public meeting?
Through you, Joanna. Yes, a public meeting requires that it also be livestreamed. So it's accessible physically and electronically. So if we don't do one, then it's not a properly constituted public meeting.
And I've just looked at the GP. And it says each candidate will be given the first question 30 minutes prior to their scheduled interview. It doesn't say anything about the other questions. And I think greater than 30 minutes prior to the interview would also be acceptable. So I don't think we're breaking the GP in order to do that. So I'm very much in favor of that. And Jean, yes, I love your idea, too. It's a great way for us to go forward. Okay, we need to clear the speakers list. Are there any final thoughts or comments on this topic before we leave it? Okay, Shanee.
Okay, thank you. I have a question. So in all municipal elections, so all the candidates, when they submitted their application, they also need to submit their ID or something to verify their address and their citizenship. So because this time, very short of time, people, a lot of people submit their application. Can we verify that to complete the certification process? So to avoid any application by mistake? Thank you.
Yes, through the chair. Yes, absolutely, that is going to be one of the requisite pieces of the process. And I'll be looking after that. So just given the sensitivity of the documentation that is provided to provide that proof, that's not, the IDs are not going to be distributed to trustees. But I will go through and make sure that I see originals or notarized copies of those documents and confirm that that criteria has been met. If that has not been provided up to 30 minutes before the interview, then their interview will be canceled because we don't have proper proof that they are qualified to hold the office. So their interview won't go forward.
So both citizenship and the address, proof of address, right?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. And school board support and age.
Okay, Donna.
I know I'm gonna hate asking this, but we're going to be sent the applications, right? And we're going to be given the opportunity to go over them. And given that the first interview is a week away, do you have any idea when we might see these twenty-nine applications that we will need to go through?
Through the chair. Tonight, I actually just need to hit send. The email is written and you'll get the link. There's a file folder created for each candidate. And you will see their provided documentation in there.
Amy? I just want to thank everybody for bringing your good ideas tonight. This really improves the process greatly and I appreciate it very much. It's not been it's not been an easy thing to go through. And I really appreciate the support tonight. Thanks. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to committee updates. I'm being mindful of time, so we'll try and be concise. Starting with board self-assessment. So the board self-assessment committee had envisioned working through a couple of the remaining themes from the survey that we did last year. In the interest of time, we just want to pose a question for you to go away and think about. You received an email about this, a heads up. And it's very timely, given that we will be appointing a new trustee. And given that we are well into this term. And so everybody has had their experience and ability to reflect upon their own initial startup as a trustee, the orientation and the onboarding that has taken place. And maybe we were able to identify some gaps or maybe better alignment of timelines and what sort of onboarding should happen when. So the question was, in that survey, all new board members receive clear orientation on their roles, responsibilities, and expectations. And we had, you know, diversity of responses. So there was some disagreement and agreement. And so I shared with you a link to a form. And I invite you, please, to share your thoughts. So what would you like to see? What topics? When in the startup process? Things that should be considered, you know, before the trustee starts in the first month, first three months in the year, that sort of thing, okay? And if you could have that completed by, I guess, I think I provided a timeline, but end of next week, I think should do it. So that, along with Carolina, we can focus on the first key pieces for this new trustee to be able to orient them. So the sooner the better with your responses. But you certainly have a few days. And that's it for board self-assessment. We'll move on to policy, bylaw, and governance.
Thank you. A number of the pieces that policy has been dealing with have come to board this evening. We are through the superintendent-led reviews, comprehensive reviews that are due this year. The committee looked and kind of said, half of them, we don't think need to come to committee at all. Half of them, we'd like to see. Those half have come and gone. So those that have not already come will be coming here shortly. And we have a couple of remaining pieces that are kind of knock-on effects of the electronic meetings affecting the bylaw and the appointments to committees and other rules, procedure. And then the suggestion that came up tonight as well, that we'll carry forward over the next meeting.
Thank you, Robbie. Next up is trustee's professional development. I know that Navid sent his regrets, but I'm wondering if Carol is willing to or able to provide us with any new information?
We haven't had a meeting since the initial. So I don't really have anything to update, unfortunately. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, Carol. And finally, financial advocacy standing committee. And so that's me again. As you will recall, the OPSPA, from the OPSPA updates, the Take Your MPP to School Week is coming up in May. I think it's the third week of May. And so this is a great opportunity for all trustees to invite their MPPs to come out and visit the schools and their writings, learn about all the wonderful things that our students and staff are doing and any, you know, interesting initiatives that the schools are engaged in. And it's also a great opportunity to have some conversations with our MPPs about some of the needs that our schools and HCSB are facing. So the committee thought that we would offer our assistance if there is any particular question or topic that you would like to explore with your MPP and you need to have access to some of the information or resources. We welcome you to complete a form and share those requests with us. And we will do our best to get some of the information back to you so that that's at your fingertips for when you're doing your school visit with your local MPP. And again, I sent an email about this earlier today. And we ask that you submit your forms by May 9th at the latest. Thank you very much. That's it. Jean, would you like to add to that? Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. In addition to taking your MPP to work, I know up in the hills, I'll be taking the mayor and some of the counselors through the schools as well. Last year, I believe it was last year, when Chair Collard and Director Ennis came up along with superintendent Tara Connor and came up and did a presentation to our town council. We had assurances from them that if we ever needed anything or if they ever needed to promote any ideas on our behalf, they would be welcome to do so. And I think getting them in and through our schools is also a good thing to do. Certainly, the MPPs have maybe a greater stick to swing when it comes to helping us with finances or other needs or understanding our schools. But I think it's really good to also include that community base, your own counselors and your own mayor. So if you have that opportunity and if it ever presents itself, I know our schools, because of the leadership we have in our schools, they're all too happy to arrange a tour for people at any time. So don't be shy in asking those to be involved.
Thank you, Jean. We'll move to item 7.0, and that's trustee questions of clarification for this agenda. Are there any questions from trustees? Seeing none, item 8.0, trustee news. Okay. Seeing none, the agenda for the public session of the Committee of the Whole has been fulfilled. It's 7:52. And I make the motion that we move into private session of the Committee of the Whole respecting security matters. Okay. 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 We have exhausted the agenda for tonight and I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Good evening.